Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 6th, 2024 at 7 o'clock PM. Thank you all for being here. Michelle, if you would, please call the roll.
Adamson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Jager.
Here.
Nauman.
Here.
Sexer.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Pelczynski.
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Now, if everyone could please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stay standing for the invocation which follows the pledge. Tonight, that will be given by Alan Ross, the Executive Director of the Jewish Foundation, or excuse me, Federation, thank you, Alan, sorry about that, of the Quad Cities.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alan, thank you.
This is a prayer that we do every week, every Saturday, in Jewish synagogues throughout the world. It's called "A Prayer for Our Country." Let us pray. Our God and God of our ancestors, we ask your blessings for our country, for its government, for its leaders and advisors, and for all who exercise just and rightful authority. Teach them insights from your Torah, they may administer all affairs of state fairly, that peace and security, happiness and prosperity, justice and freedom may forever abide in our midst. Creator of all flesh, bless all the inhabitants of our country with your spirit. May citizens of all races and creeds forge a common bond and true harmony, to banish hatred and bigotry, and to safeguard the ideals and free institutions that are the pride and glory of our country. May this land under your providence be an influence for good throughout the world, uniting all people in peace and freedom, helping them to fulfill the vision of your prophet. Nation shall not lift up sword against nation, neither shall they experience war anymore. Let us say amen.
Amen. All right, you may be seated. Thank you, Alan Ross, the Executive Director of the Jewish Federation of the Quad Cities. Now on to an organization led by a wonderful individual who does a lot of good in our community consistent with our prayer. Major Bob Doliber from the Salvation Army is here to present us with a little token of appreciation for some time we spent raising a little money.
Thanks for the note.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
Good, yeah. Well, Mayor and City Council members, today we were notified, the media, that Salvation Army of the Quad Cities had reached our $750,000 Make a Difference campaign goal for Christmas. And that's a lot of coins, a lot of bills, and a lot of checks. And more than that, we raised $50,000 more than last year. So we're really happy about that. And all that money stays local, making it lives different for the people that we serve, not only Christmas time, but throughout the year. And I just checked last night, in the Quad Cities, 169 individuals, including 107 children, were provided shelter and transitional housing services by the Salvation Army. And with that, they received case management, help finding, setting goals, finding jobs, finding stable housing, keeping their kids in school. And Mayor, you and your generous supporters were a big part in making that happen. For the second year, we laid down the challenge, a mayoral battle of the bells, to the Quad City mayors. And this year, we went from three to five mayors accepted the challenge, to see how much money they could raise in just two hours. And those five mayors raised $1,000 to help make a difference. And I'm so happy that we're keeping the traveling trophy on this side of the river. Mayor, you and your supporters raised $459.66.
Yeah, baby.
And Lisa won it last year for me when I was out of town, so you can hold on to that.
Oh, cool.
We hope they're gonna keep it here. Yeah, well, we'll take it back next year. Thanks to all of you who've been on the support.
Gotta get a picture.
Yeah.
Wait, give him back the bell, give him back the bell.
Yeah, we're gonna do a picture with him.
Very good, thank you.
You bet. Bob, thanks for coming. Thanks to the Salvation Army for all the great work you do. Thanks for sharing a little bit about that today. And we'll continue hoping and praying for the ladies who serve, and hoping to provide as much support in town as we can to help alleviate the issues that you face every day. Thank you, we appreciate your support.
Here, Lisa.
Yep.
All right, we move to a proclamation. And this proclamation is being received, I don't know what this point goes or what it's for, by the folks at Unity Point Health. And we're asking that Sean Morrow, the Market CEO, come join us. Dr. Oladi, Chief Medical Officer, Unity Point Health, and Michelle Nierman, the Eastern Division COO for Unity Point Health. We also have Mary McCumber Schmidt, the President of Unity Point Health Foundation here. And she, we all know Mary, on the Y. But we're glad to see you, Mary, and you certainly can come up and join your group if you wish. Dr., very nice to meet you. Thank you very much, very nice to meet you both today. Are you before? Thank you. We appreciate it. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas Unity Point Health Trinity will celebrate its 20th anniversary at its Bettendorf campus on February 18th, 2024, and whereas the hospital opened its doors on February 18th, 2004, and has seen an increase in patient services since that time, and continues to grow and change according to the community's healthcare needs. And whereas having community partners committed to preventing illness and injury among our residents is vital to the overall health of our community. And whereas Unity Point Health Trinity employees, employees, excuse me, medical staff, volunteers, hospital and foundation boards have worked tirelessly together and have willingly given their time, expertise, and compassion to provide excellence in patient care. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Sunday, February 18th, 2024, as Trinity Bettendorf Day in the City of Bettendorf. And I call upon all of our citizens of our great city to join me in congratulating Unity Point Trinity on their 20th anniversary and wishing them well on the next 20 years. Here, here, here. Anybody wish to say a few words before we cut a couple of pictures?
Sure.
All right. If you get to hold that, you're gonna speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
I'm Sean Morrow, I'm the President for Unity Point Health Trinity. I'm new to the area, I'm a Bettendorf resident, bought a home here.
And I think soon a Bettendorf Rotary member, didn't we?
We got all kinds of opportunities, right?
Right. You did Rotary once, you're in.
Loving being here. It's hard to think back, I would think, 20 years ago, when there was not a hospital, a full-service hospital in this community, given all the growth that's happened, the great things that have occurred here. We're honored to be a part, the City of Bettendorf, the growth, the goodness of the people. And as Bettendorf's only full-service community hospital, we look forward to being here for years to come and growing with you. Thank you so much.
Come on up. You can come up and get one. Get all over the foundation.
He should be in the picture.
Step over this way a little bit, we'll get Mary in a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you got the swearing in now.
Yeah, baby. All right. Now, the moment you've all been waiting for. Not really for the bell ringing award, right? Just to see that? Okay. Ready, sir? Chief, sir? Please join me up here. Ladies and gentlemen, our Fire Chief, Chief Troy Saye. Obviously, we're here to swear in six new officers, so Chief, you have the floor.
All right, well, thank you very much, your honor, appreciate it. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's a huge special night for us here at the City of Bettendorf. We're swearing in six new firefighters. Couldn't be more than happy to have them on our team. And we appreciate everything they do. I'd like to start off by thanking all the family members for the six new guys. You guys are really their support group, and they need that. I know the process of becoming a firefighter isn't easy, and then being married to one is even more difficult, I can tell you that much. But they need that support, and I can tell you, we're here to support them along their journey as well. We're gonna add lib a little bit tonight, because you guys may not realize this, but 10 minutes before this all happened, we had a structural fire come out, all of our paid guys left, we're still waiting on one of those individuals, but I'm sure he'll show up, because they're pretty good at overcoming and adapting, and there he is.
We're not putting the fire out?
Those two were working so they have an excuse for being late. Other than that, no excuse. Just teasing. I gotta make sure I get their numbers right, they'll be upset with me. Along with thanking all the family members, I appreciate city staff that's here today, all of our department heads. I'd like to thank our community members for being here, county members, partners for being here. I'd like to point one out in particular, and that's Jean Dixon. I'm gonna embarrass her a little bit, she embarrasses me a lot, it seems like. She is one of our Civil Service Commissioners, and she volunteers her time, along with two other individuals, to come and sit through a very long day of interviews. And then they have a very difficult decision of making that list. And it is hard to do, because we get some really qualified applicants, and you're gonna see that tonight as we introduce them. So thank you, Jean, for all your volunteer time, we truly appreciate it. And of course, our elected officials, Mayor Bob, City Administrator Decker Plain, without your support, it doesn't happen. I mean, it's truly that simple. So representing all the men and women from the Fire Department, I'd like to say thank you, and we truly mean that, so we appreciate all your support. Last thing I want to do is thank my firefighters, because they're the ones, day in and day out, that do the job. They make us look really good. It's easy to look good when your support staff is as incredible as they are. So I'm proud to be in the forefront for them. So it's truly an honor working for you guys, I appreciate that. So let's get to the reason why we're here. Mayor Gallagher's gonna do the swearing in of our individuals. I'm gonna try not to embarrass them, but as they come up, I'm gonna give you a quick snippet of their life, and I mean really quick. Doesn't do justice for what these individuals have accomplished. And then we'll take some photos and call the evening, get you guys out here and let you go wherever the plans are. Tonight, we're gonna start with Dan Decker. He joined our department in October of 2022. He was extremely busy his first year. He was in the paramedic program when he came to us, and that's very difficult to do. He did outstanding in all of his clinical time, study time. And then we sent him to the academy in the fall. So that's part of the reason these two first individuals are kind of late getting sworn in. They were busy. And that's by design, the busier we keep them, the better off they are. He graduated from the University of Iowa with a degree in exercise science. He loves golfing, exercising, obviously. And I think the most important thing is that he's a third-generation firefighter. And with him tonight is his mom and dad, Tom and Judy Decker. Tom just retired from Davenport, I think 30 years or plus 30 years. So thank you for your service, sir. And along with him is his girlfriend, Willow. So Tom will come up afterwards and do the pinning, sir, it's all yours.
Come join me over here. How are you? There you go. All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Daniel Decker.
I, Daniel Decker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as firefighter.
Discharge all duties as firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Welcome aboard. Remember how one of those works, sir? No, no, no. I put it all behind me almost immediately. I've never done it from this bad angle.
Usually the shirt's on the bed.
It's not drawing blood.
Oh, and living blood never hurt.
Pretty tough. Yeah, it hasn't worn her as much. Won't be the first time I cross the street, probably.
Tom, we gotta be out here midnight.
There you go.
All right, our next individual is John Coslick. He also joined our department in October of 2022. Before that, he was a volunteer with us, so he had some experience coming in. We got to interview him for a long, long time, which was nice. And he too had a very busy year, attending academy right off the bat from being hired. They kind of switched spaces, one in the spring and one in the fall. John grew up in Omaha, Nebraska. He has a major in finance. He spent 10 years in the finance world as a Series 7 extraordinary, I don't even know what it is. It's something that we're going to definitely use for our advantage, so we're glad to have him here. Tonight, John is with his wife, Dolly, and three daughters, and Dolly's gonna do the pinning. Daughters are Kendall, Maddie, and Ella. So welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Ready?
Ready.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Coslick.
I, John Coslick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Two for two. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as firefighter.
Discharge all duties as firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
So we're gonna fast forward a year. It's November of '23 now, and these are our next four hires, next four hires. Jacob Culver, if you wanna come up. He will be going to the Fire Academy in about how many days?
20.
20 days. So hired in November and right to a seven-week program, it's very, very difficult. But in the meantime, we prep these individuals that are going to academy, so I'm sure he's ready for the job. He grew up in Hampton, Illinois, and volunteered for that program. And he enjoys working out, deck hockey, hanging out with his family, friends, and he's an avid hockey fan, so he's still here. Yep, like that. Joining tonight are his parents, Jeff and Luanne, Grandma Pat, Uncle Perry, girlfriend Alyssa, and younger brother Zach, who's gonna do the pinning. So, yeah, so we'll actually come on up.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jacob Culver.
I, Jacob Culver.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge all duties of firefighter.
Discharge all duties of firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Chief. At some point, thank you. Thank you.
They must be noon pins.
They're very difficult to open, that's the only thing.
They're very stiff. I don't wanna embarrass Jake, but he was Chief Canore's replacement. You don't have big shoes to fill, but Chief, this is your new protege. I'm sure he's going to do just fine. Thank you.
Very nice.
All right, we're gonna continue. The next one is Tyler Chia. And just counsel, so you know, this is the start of our Safer Grant. The next three are the first three in our Safer Grant, and then we'll have three more coming in a couple of months, and we can repeat this process, which I'm sure you're happy about. I'm ecstatic, so. Tyler Chia also started, like I said, in November. He's gonna be heading to academy as well in 20 days. I know he's ready for the challenge. Once again, it's not easy, but these guys are ready for it. He was born in Wisconsin, but I claim him as a Bettendorf kid, because he moved here when he was three years old, so that's a win for us, we're still gonna say he's a Bettendorf kid. He played a ton of sports through junior high and high school, always competing with his brother Steven, who was his biggest competitor. And they were inseparable. So Tyler talks about you all the time, Steven, says you're a great mentor, even though you're twins. But he also talks about when you guys split from college, and that was hard for him, and I think it was hard for you. But the good thing about that story is now they're both back living in Bettendorf, continuing their professional careers. So we're glad to see you back here as well. Joining Tyler tonight are his biggest supporters, Mark and Heidi Chia, and Steven's girlfriend, Erin. So welcome aboard.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tyler Chia.
I, Tyler Chia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as firefighter.
Discharge all duties as firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As of now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Good to see you again. Thanks for being here. Can't tell if they're twins, huh?
Better looking.
He also says he's more athletic. I'll let you guys battle that out. All right, our next one to come swearing in is Joseph Martinez, come on up, too. Also hired in November. He was also a volunteer for us prior to, and we got to spend a ton of quality time from him, and the guys just spoke volumes about him when they were working out at Station Four with him, totally impressed our staff. And honestly, that's part of the interview process, so congratulations on that. As you can tell, he's just a well, clean-cut kid. He is currently enrolled in the paramedic program, which he's doing extremely well in, but it is so time-consuming with all the clinical hours, the right time you have to do, and obviously studying. We're gonna delay sending him to Fire Academy in 20 days for good reason. We want him to finish that program, and then he's gonna continue Fire Academy in the fall with some more of our new hires coming. So he has a little bit of advantage, maybe, maybe he'll get the insight from those guys attending. Joe was born and raised in Davenport, worked for Medic, obviously, before here too. And tonight, supporting him are his parents, Joan and Nicole Martinez, his younger brother and sister, and Joe's grandfather. And his mother, Nicole, will be doing the pinning, so congratulations.
All right, let's raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joseph Martinez.
I, Joseph Martinez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge, to the best of my ability. Good catch. Discharge all the duties of firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
And the last one this evening, Dalton South. One of Dalton. He was hired in November of '23 with the group. He also worked for Medic EMS prior to employment here with us, and he is also leaving in 20 days for Basic Fire Academy, which I'm sure they're all thrilled about. Actually, it's a great program, it's one of the best programs you can send new hires to, just a lot of work. Joe grew up in Eldridge, attending North Scott Schools, and now lives in Long Grove with his wife, Brittany, and their two dogs. I hear from the little time he's been with us, he's a computer wizard, so we're also going to use that for our data tracking. I'm sure we're gonna acquire some of those skills and keep us off the naughty list for IT. With him tonight, in the audience with Brittany, are her parents, Dalton's stepparents, Gary and Melody Casa, Dalton's brother-in-law, his wife, their two daughters, Dalton's sister, her husband, and their son. And Gary, his stepdad, will be doing the pinning tonight, so congratulations, but thank you all for being here.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dalton Stow.
I, Dalton Stow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of firefighter.
Discharge all duties of firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. Pull this up with one hand. I've been in one of those.
This is gonna hurt a lot.
Probably.
Probably.
to take a group picture, and then family, friends, if you want, there's a Bettendorf logo out on the backside, too. You're more than welcome to head back there and take photos of your loved ones, but we're gonna do this. Once again, thank you all for coming. It's truly a great, great day in our industry. We've had a lot of growth, and with that comes a lot of growth in firefighters, police officers.
In between games, you could be seen. How'd I do, Angel? Look at that.
Well, Shirley's with you, too. Please welcome.
Nice job.
Thank you, thank you. Nice job, thank you. You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, there are riveting things out here. If you want any pictures, there's a wall there set up for you to take some pictures, those that we took. And Angel, come out and take some there, I think. So we'll have more pictures of the family and those supporters that we provided to you, so all these that we took, you're gonna get.
Congratulations.
Surprise!
Just take care of it.
Well, that's why you trust, you can play a little bit, you try a little harder.
That girl will do it, right?
We're gonna be there, we're gonna get you there. Firefighters are doing better with Faithfully and Impartially than a cop. I told Keith that, I go, you're all getting better? Well, the firefighters are better with Faithfully and Impartially.
I changed that cadence. Changed this.
Tom was just moving.
roles, exit chambers, we'll get started again with our continuing agenda. The next item on our agenda is public requests of counsel. If there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, you can be heard by approaching the podium in the back, please state your name and your address, we'd like to hear from you. Anybody here for public requests of counsel? All right, let's close public requests of counsel. We do have a public hearing tonight. This is with regard to the Eighteenth Street Reconstruction Project from Fifty-third Avenue to St. Andrew's Circle. Brian, any comments here? I think we're pretty well-versed, and it's been part of our CIP. Okay, any council questions for Brian before our public hearing? Any more information you need? Okay.
Board, thanks you.
Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to our Eighteenth Street Reconstruction Project. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Adamson, please help us with the resolution.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the Eighteenth Street Reconstruction Project from Fifty-third Avenue to St. Andrew's Circle. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion on this resolution affecting the street? Okay. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
We have unanimously passed the Eighteenth Street Reconstruction Project. All right, the first of a trio of second readings belongs to Councilmember Baden.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a second reading of ordinance amending the Bettendorf, Iowa zone map for property generally located on the southeast corner of Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive. A-one agricultural urban reserve district to C-two community commercial district. I move approval of the ordinance at the second reading.
Second. Any discussion? We've heard about this at committee of the whole, we had it presented last time for the first reading. Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Now batting, the second hitter. Councilmember Nauman, would you help us with this second reading?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have the second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Title XI Zoning Regulation, Section eleven-six-one Overlay Districts, and Section eleven-six-two FD Floodway and Flood Plane Overlay District. I move approval of this ordinance at the second reading.
Second. Any discussion here on the second reading? Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
All right, we unanimously pass all three second readings this evening. We move to a third and final reading, this time for Councilmember Sexer to present.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Title eight, Public Utilities and Services, Chapter two, Sewer Use and Service, Section eight-two-nine, Sewer Connection Fees, Disposition of Funds. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
All right, any discussion here after our motion ends second? This, we've seen twice, end the committee of the whole. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
All right, that third and final reading unanimously passes, let's move to our consent agenda, and I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the same at this time.
So moved.
Is there a particular item any council member would like to discuss at this time? All right, seeing shakes of the head in the negative direction, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We just confirmed unanimously all consent agenda items. At this time, we would like to enter executive session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five, sub one, sub I, for purposes of discussing the performance evaluation of our city administrator. Mr. City Administrator, would you like us to do so?
I would like you to do so in closed session, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. I would like to entertain a motion to do so from the council.
I'll move.
Second.
Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have unanimously approved the compensation change. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, good work. People, where you go.
We need to figure out-